All righty. We're gonna bring this meeting back to order.
Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Queen Anne's County Commissioners Meeting. This is a public meeting that is being aired on our local cable television station, QACTV seven. These media broadcasts provide county citizens an opportunity to watch and review our scheduled public meetings. In addition to our live audience this evening, we are providing remote options for citizens to watch and participate in county commissioner meetings. Citizens may watch our meeting live on our website at QAC.org/live or on our public access governmental television channel provided by Breeze Line Cable Services. Citizens may also participate by joining the live Zoom meeting by going to QAC.org-publiccomment. And citizens may also email comments to publiccomment@QAC.org. All comments received will be summarized during the press and public comment period on this evening's agenda. We acknowledge everyone's participation and by attending you acknowledge that this session is both recorded and aired. Press and public comment will be taken and is limited to three minutes per person. Here to speak, please sign up at the information table in our lobby. Comments longer than three minutes can be submitted in writing for the commissioner's review. We will now stand and be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Commission President Jim Moran.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everybody. So that brings us commissioners to the approval of today's agenda. So the agenda for today's meeting, September 24th, along with the regular session minutes, the closed session minutes from your September 10th meeting have been circulated for review. Do we have any additions or corrections?
No, a motion to approve the agenda and the minutes as submitted.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you commissioners. So we just held a closed session under the General Provisions Article Section 3305B1 to discuss personnel and boards and commissions. And I believe we have a couple boards and commission appointments for consideration. First, we have the Blue Heron Golf Course Advisory Committee.
I move to appoint Jim Riggins to fill the vacancy on the Blue Heron Golf Course Advisory Committee. This term will expire on June 30th of 2025.
Second.
We have a motion to the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Some move.
All right, thank you commissioners. Item two was the Property Tax Assessment Appeals Board.
So this would be my honor to recommend that Vito Tonelli be appointed. Fill the vacancy on the Property Tax Assessment Appeals Board. This term will expire on June 1st, 2028.
Second.
We have a motion in second. Any further discussion on this? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, heck yes.
And just a point of order commissioners, this does go to the governor for confirmation, and I believe Mr. Tonelli has made the application to the governor's office already, so we'll expedite this because I know this board is in need of some assistance. All right, and lastly, we have the Spending Affordability Committee.
I move to reappoint Linda Kohler and Bernie Sandusky to the Spending Affordability Committee. These terms will begin October 1st, 2024 and expire on September 30th, 2026.
Second.
We have a motion in second. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Some move.
All right, thank you commissioners. That is all we have from the closed session as far as decisions. We can move into press and public comment if you like.
Okay. We only have one person sign up, Fred Kirsch.
Let me do this. So we appreciate all citizens for taking time to express your views to the county commissioners. Citizens are limited to three minutes per person, or excuse me, comments are limited to three minutes per person. Comments longer than three minutes can be submitted in writing. This commission respects your desire and right to convey your messages freely. When you come forward, please speak clearly at our standing microphone, state your name, your address, and your topic of interest. And in keeping with the dignity of our office, we ask that all views be expressed in a respectful and civil manner. Okay, Mr. Kirsch.
Anyway, my name is Fred Kirsch. I live at 422 Quarter Creek Drive, Queenstown, Maryland, which is on the Y River, Quarter Creek off the Y River. And I'm here to express my concern about the short-term rentals. The Y River has always been a jewel for Queen Anne's County and the Bay in total. Back in the 1950s, James Rouse wanted to develop Y Island into one of his projects, and the people on the river put an end to that. Later on, Mr. Schaefer wanted to build a commercial marina on the river and a hotel the second in size to the Hyatt in Cambridge. And that was put aside, thank God. Now we have the short-term rentals that we have to deal with. On Quarter Creek, there are three of them presently. One of them is 25,000 square feet in size. The residence sleeps up to 32 people. Apparently, you know, the people in that house don't reside in the county, they live in the state. The third one on Quarter Creek, the people live in New York. These people are not paying any taxes, income taxes to the county or the state. Well, one's state. But something needs to be done. It looks like a hotel. One of the neighbors said that it looks like a cruise ship at night when it's all lit up. There's no supervision at these short-term rentals. They bring in their own boats, and most of them really don't know how to handle their boats, and they cause havoc in the creek. And when I led the charge against the hotel, I asked the county for a list of people that live on the river, and they said, "We don't have that list, but just look at who pays the taxes, the property taxes." And the commissioners need to find ways to curb these short-term rentals or the taxes that are going to collect going down. Because if people find out what's going on on these houses, they're not going to be buying the properties. My wife said the other night, "If we knew what was going on, then we would not buy our house." And, you know, other counties, Talbot counties, have problems with it and how they've addressed it, I don't know. Some people say you need to have short-term or a minimum 30 days rentals. And then maybe the residents, only people who have the house as their principal residence would rent it out so that it would prevent people from buying properties just to rent them out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. That's all I had who signed up to speak. Would anybody else like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to greener pastures.
Okay. All right, commissioners, moving on. If you want to turn to the legislation section of the book, that would be tab number seven. And we have four ordinances that can be potentially introduced. So under tab seven, first item, item one, on pages 1 through 21, is the ordinance, County Ordinance 2409, for short-term rentals. And the intention of this ordinance is to amend the county code to allow for short-term rentals in all dwelling units, to add a definition of short-term rentals, and amend other definitions in the code. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission in September, and they reviewed the proposed language and recommended four to one to send a favorable recommendation back to the commissioners for this bill as drafted. And I will say currently, we do not regulate short-term rentals at all. So this is a step to provide some regulations on short-term rentals in Queen Anne's County. And Stephanie Jones is here. She's been instrumental in preparing all of this, so if you have any questions about this, but it is ready for your consideration.
At this point, it just needs to be introduced.
Just for introduction and schedule a hearing at this stage. All right, we done with that? All right, moving on. Item number two, also on tab number seven, is County Ordinance 24-13. This is for indoor shooting ranges. And the intention of this text amendment county ordinance is to define the indoor shooting range use and add outdoor, excuse me, indoor shooting range as a permitted use in Queen Anne's County within the urban, commercial, suburban, industrial, and airport protection and Kent Island Gateway zoning districts.
I'll introduce that.
Any questions on that ordinance? Okay. Item number three is County Ordinance 2414. This is beginning on page 38 through 48. This is impact fee for farm employee dwellings. This is an exemption, and the intention of this amendment ordinance is to amend the county code to ensure that farm employee dwellings are exempt from impact fees on properties subject to certain conservation easements to define the types of easements which qualify for such exemptions and to clarify the imposition of impact fees with respect to farm employee dwellings. So this is a kind of a housekeeping item. And lastly, we have County Ordinance 24-16. This is the Community Reinvestment and Repair Commission. This is subject to, this is sprung out of the Cannabis Reform Act, which requires each county to adopt a law establishing the purpose for which the money received from the Community Reinvestment and Repair Fund may be used. This is the cannabis sales tax. So our LMB, Local Management Board, has cordially agreed to help us designate those funds for the appropriate uses. This is a state requirement to have an ordinance. Each county is in the process now of developing their own criteria.
Oh, I'll introduce it.
All right, Commissioner Wilson.
So on any one of these four, we're gonna set those up for hearings, which would be probably in a month from now. Sound right?
Twenty-two, November 27th.
Yeah, so two meetings from now.
I mean, if you want all four of these at the same meeting, that's fine. We can stagger them if you want to, you know, have a...
Well, I, there's four of them, but there's really two of them are...
No brainers.
Well, I hate to say that, but, you know, yeah, I think we keep them all the same.
Okay, that's fine.
I guess my question is, and for the public, they can come testify for or against any one of these, and if the commissioners want to make changes on any one of these, it's just done by an amendment to it? Amending the bill doesn't have to go from us back to the Planning Commissioner anywhere else, it just... I think you were that close, that close to getting out.
Stephanie Jones, Planning and Zoning. So if there's a substantial change, I believe it does have to go back to the Planning Commission.
So what, how do you deem substantial?
It really depends on what the ordinance is and...
But I mean, there's gotta be somebody that makes the judgment and says, "Hey, that's substantial." I mean, I...
Off the top of my head, I'm not sure who deems it substantial, but I think it really, if the intent of the ordinance is still the same, and for example, if you're just changing something like a setback from 25 feet to 50 feet, that might not really be substantial. But if it's something larger than that, it would probably be, might be substantial.
If you took short-term rental and you said it was, instead of being, let's say, 10 days, it's...
Thirty days or something.
Ninety days or something like that, that might be considered substantial because it's a real deviation from the harm of it.
Yep.
Very well. People can also write in. They can write in, they don't have to show a person.
Another county's...
What was the first part? Sorry, I couldn't hear it.
On the short-term rental.
Yes, I got that.
Are we looking at any other counties, how they handle it?
Yes, so we looked at the entire shore, we looked at most of the state to see how other jurisdictions handle it as well.
I will say the planning department has been working on this particular ordinance for quite a while. Some time now. We've had a lot of feedback so far to date from various committees and members of the public, so I'm sure it's gonna generate some commentary for consideration, and it probably is one that we would, if there are substantial changes, we'd want to send it back to the Planning Commission for consideration.
Right, and because that's a holding use in the code too, that would be...
It is a standard, yeah.
Not good?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes the items in the legislative section of the book for this evening. We can move into presentations, if you like. So first up, we have Ms. Carly Palmer, Outreach Coordinator, and Mrs. Susan Alstrom, the Regional Navigator. We have Proclamation 2438, For All Seasons Suicide Prevention Month. So if you want to come on up, ladies, please. This is tab number six, commissioners. Item one. Tab six, item one, page one.
Evening.
Welcome.
Yes, thank you.
Yep, welcome. See you guys.
Thank you, Commissioner members. So my name is Susan Alstrom, I'm the Human Trafficking Regional...
Pull the mic closer to you, please. There you go.
My name is Susan Alstrom, I'm the Human Trafficking Regional Navigator at For All Seasons.
And I'm Carly Palmer, I'm our Outreach Coordinator at For All Seasons. And For All Seasons is a community behavioral health and rape crisis center. We provide therapy, psychiatry, victim services, and crisis support and education, as well as outreach to the community. We provide these services regardless of anyone's ability to pay. And we have, we're excited to offer our open access program where there is no wait for an appointment, and we have an office here in Stevensville, and we are very proud to serve Queen Anne's County.
How long you been in Stevens? When did you open that?
Just a few months ago.
It's been, yeah. So today, we're doing our Suicide Prevention Month proclamation just to show people, well, you'll see in the statistics, it just shows how suicide affects everybody, impacts us all, and it's just, you know, a call to ask, listen, and share, you know? Be open to having those uncomfortable conversations with people because it could save a life ultimately, so just the importance of that.
Awesome. Very good. Well, you've got a proclamation, and Commissioner Wilson, please come in.
I got it. Proclamation 2438. Whereas in the United States, one person dies by suicide every 11 minutes, even though most of these deaths are preventable. And whereas 49,476 people in the United States, including 608 people in Maryland, died by suicide in 2022, as reported by Centers for Disease Control. And whereas in Maryland, suicide is the second-leading cause of death for 10- to 14-year-olds and the third-leading cause of death for ages 15 to 34. And whereas, according to the 2021 Youth Risk Behavior Survey conducted by local school systems with the CDC, in the 12 months prior to the 2021 survey, 15.4% of Queen Anne's County teens attempted suicide. And whereas more Marylanders die by suicide than by homicide every year. And whereas the suicide rate in Maryland's rural mid-shore region is 40% higher compared to the state average. And whereas suicide affects us all, with each death by suicide affecting an average of 115 people. And whereas the economic toll of suicide on society is immense, suicides and suicide attempts cost the nation almost $70 billion per year in lifetime medical and work loss costs alone. And whereas many individuals experiencing suicidal thoughts and behaviors or who died by suicide never receive effective behavioral health services for many reasons, including the difficulty of accessing the services of healthcare providers professionally trained to reduce suicide risk and the stigma of seeking treatment. We urge all Queen Anne's County citizens to, one, support the development of accessible behavioral health services for all citizens of our county in an effort to reduce the risk of suicide and mental health challenges for people of all ages and backgrounds. And, two, recognize suicide as a significant public health risk and declare suicide prevention and mental health support a priority. Now therefore, we the Queen Anne's County Commissioners do hereby declare the month of September as no matter what you matter Suicide Prevention Month, and urge all citizens to actively work toward the prevention of suicide and to reach out to one another and ask, "Are you okay?" Listen without judgment and share vital resources to promote an inclusive and mentally healthy community. Signed, the Queen Anne's County Commissioner.
So I sit on the Drug Free Coalition, and I know they do the surveys every year. And what really caught my attention was high school females, one in three has contemplated suicide. And that's just alarming. I just, you know, you're right, you can't tell the book by the cover, because I would never think that, but, I mean, they write that down amongst other things, and it's, wow. Do you do a lot?
Those percentages are astounding, absolutely. And so we do outreach and education, education around suicide prevention. Again, we are open to and eager to coordinate with your schools to help the, support the staff and the students and the families. But education and outreach, as well as just asking, you know, the people in your lives, staying open and being courageous to ask, "How are you doing?", and stay in touch with how our, you know, the mental health of the individuals, and encouraging people to seek help when they need it. Those are, they're key elements in the prevention of suicide and other...
How much of the work that you guys are doing is specifically targeted to our schools? Or to schools?
We continually are trying to get in more involved with the schools. We do have school-based services, and to be honest, I'm not sure, I believe we're here, I know we're entering, we're moving into Kent County, we've been in Talbot County. I don't believe we have the school-based services here in Queen Anne's County as of yet. We would very much like to talk about that. But those services, we're expanding into Dorchester County, but they, you know, I don't think there's any school probably in the nation that has enough social services or other supports for the pressures and the, you know, what our children are experiencing these days in terms of stress and, as we know, social media and other things affect those...
Absolutely, yeah, social media.
Those, yeah.
And is there a program that you have designated or prepared that are just for, say, our middle schools to upper schools, to our high schools?
We have done trainings for the teachers so that they can bring those, that information into the schools. And then we have special outreach events or programs that we'll do periodically. Last year, we had a program in the St. Michael's Middle School with a special athlete, and of course, I can't remember his name right now, but he has a program where he teaches children or young youth to be self-confident and to be open and resilient. And so those special programs, we are always looking to partner with our community, the communities that we serve in order to fulfill that. But we also have our Center for Learning, where we are always evolving and creating programs, creating, we just completed a mandated reporter training for our human trafficking program, which I know I've presented to all of you on that. And so we're expanding our capability in order to have that greater outreach. But the suicide prevention, we participate in every county in, you know, especially this time of year with these focused initiatives in order to create awareness and let families and our community members know that we are here to provide the support. So again, we are always open to ideas, and we've got the ability and the desire to work to develop those programs even further in order to have a greater impact.
So do our, does, we have two high schools, as you know. Do we have a therapist in each school? Meaning by, via...
From For All Seasons? Oh, from Board of Ed?
Yeah.
To be honest, I don't know, but I would imagine that you do. I would think that each school has at least one.
Not to put anybody on the spot.
Yes, sure.
How could we help you get into schools?
Well, it's a matter of making the connections and the introduction so that we can come and speak with. Well, superintendent is always a good place to start. The superintendent and/or, you know, oftentimes, it's also any willing teacher or, for instance, in Talbot Public Schools, we are working with the health, the head of the health curriculum, the head of the health and education, physical education, PE department. And so we've trained those teachers in all subjects related to mental health and other health subjects, health ed. And so we could, that's always a good start. And actually, I can follow up with you in order to make that connection, I would love to do that. But again, oftentimes, it's, you know, teachers are overextended, everybody is, time is always an issue, and so finding creative ways to offer that programming or doing professional development days so that we can work with the staff, so they're more, more aware and they have better tools. Because again, a lot of our health curriculum, to be quite honest, I know for the state has been, you know, was established 10 years ago, you know, some time ago, and as we all know, things have changed dramatically in the last even five years with, you know, our history with COVID and everything else, our, the environment that we live in, a lot of disruptive experiences with our international issues. And so starting with the health curriculum, that might be a good way to go, but any...
Do you talk to the school board?
I have not, but I would, I know we're in touch with them, absolutely. And we have done work in the county with, through the CAC and through the Child's Advocacy Center. So it's the, it's the invitation to connect with those who are making decisions in the schools that would help us move that forward. If that's, if anybody can assist with that, that would be great.
Very good. We appreciate what you're doing, and thank you for your presentation.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We'll make sure we put a message out to our Board of Education.
That would be terrific. We would appreciate that greatly. Thank you.
Are we able to get a photo, or is that...
Call me when you're ready.
Sure.
Yes, okay. I will do, thank you.
That you have to do the usual Photoshop's?
Yes, please.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate your help.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you.
Good evening.
All righty. and Tourism Development Department, and I believe she has some of her colleagues with her. We have Connie Dean and Rebecca Clark. The presentation is in your book, pages 2 through 19, item two, under tab six, and it's also up on the screen and your monitors as well. Again, that's item two, page, starting on page two, under tab six. All right.
All right, Heather, take it away.
Commissioners, thank you so much for having us this evening, and as County Administrator Maun mentioned, we have Rebecca Clark, who is our Economic Development Administrator, and Connie Dean, who is our Workforce Development Administrator, and we're missing at the table April Plummer, who handles marketing and tourism for our department, but she is actually at the Maryland Moto Coach Event, selling the county and hoping to bring some group bus tours here. So, she's here with us in spirit, and we have some information on things that she handles to share. The first slide that you'll see, and we tried to keep it brief and show you some things that you may be interested in, are some of our key performance indicators, things we look at to see if we're moving in the right direction for July. Our unemployment rate was at 2.8%. We are the lowest in the state, along with Carroll and Howard. Most of the other counties are, you know, not far behind us, 2.9 or above. The state is running 3.3%. And as I've mentioned to you before, it's great to see the number so low, but on the other hand, we have many jobs that are open that our employers are really, you know, looking for employees, so there's that to consider. The second one is our commercial property tax base. Thank you, Jeff Frank, for providing me that. He's been getting me that on a semi-annual basis. And what we, you know, ideally, for larger counties, you could see up to 30% for that percentage. Ours is much slower than that. But we need to keep in mind, when you look at the overall zoning of the county, how much of that is agriculture, how much of that is residential. If you look at the tax assessments, 80% of it is residential and 9% of it is ag. And so, when you look at what's left, that pretty much gets you to what our commercial property tax base is. We are currently marketing about 15 properties that are commercially zoned and areas that are in our growth areas, and there's some more that are on the outskirts and in Northern County as well. So, we do have potential for growth, but, you know, commercial opportunities are not as great as some of the other, when you look at the zoning, some of the other zonings there. And then, we expect the population to grow per some of our data that we receive at about 4.3% over the next five years, when you look at 2023 to 2028. Currently, we are doing our best to keep track of the deals and economic growth that we see coming through our doors. As you heard me mention, we have 15 properties. It's a little bit more active, we're actively helping to market. Some of those are leased, some of those are commercial properties that are for sale. We closed about $16 million in deals over the last year, and what that means is it could be grants, it could be that we've assisted someone in an enterprise zone and/or defined financing. Some of those deals are Chesapeake Chefs, which is building in Graceville on the left-hand side, next to the Royal Farms, they just broke ground the other day. And then, the dog food manufacturer that's going into the Matta Peak Business Park, which we're really excited about, that's a huge development there. And then, this number sounds wonderful, but I do need to have the caveat, we have about $100 million in potential deals, but we all know with economic development, it takes a lot of time to make something happen, and we'll probably get one of those, which could be in the 10 to $12 million range, but all in all, there are some really big ones that we know are going to happen over the next few years, and I'd be happy to talk to you more about those if you're interested. So, it just, we'll move through past this one really quick. These are the boards and commissions that we handle within our department, so pretty much each staff member has a commission or an advisory commission that we support and And these are the Rural Maryland Economic Development Fund projects. This has been two years in the making, and we are near the finish line, and I'm so happy about that. But they've all been really impactful. We had 11 projects, and November, December is the official deadline. If you remember, gosh, probably a couple of months ago, we came to you and asked for an extension for the Centerville project and a move of some of the money from the Centerville project to the 4H Park. But all of those tend to be moving forward. We did ask for one additional extension on the Southersville piece of this project, and we're waiting to hear back on that, but all the others will be completed in time. So, the largest one was the 4H Park, which was originally 1.2 million, and it's now 1.5. And then, another one of interest, which has been very successful, is the Career Co., the Career Centers within the college, which Connie's going to talk about in a little while. And then, the Chesapeake College expansion of the trades programs has been really successful, and all of the five counties provided some level of funding to them to help them move those forward.
Do you want to mention any of those other?
Sure, I'll mention a couple. Can you hear me? So, yeah, I've been working on a few of these projects as well. It's been really exciting to get, to dig into these. One that I wanted to give you an update on was the broadband at Chesapeake Bay Business Park down in Stevensville. That project has gone really smoothly, the fiber's in, the backup electrical system was wired yesterday, and they are planning to have the fiber lit and available in the next two weeks. So, they're going to be doing some outreach too and publicity and marketing there to the businesses. So, we're excited to have more reliable, reliable service and a backup service there for our businesses and their tenants.
Quick question, if I can, real quick. The occupancy percentage at the business park?
94%. Yeah. It's a great option, but they're limited in what they have for people who are looking right now.
So, that I think is office slash warehouse, and much smaller. And then, the larger building that they just built, it was leased out before they finished, and then they're looking to put another one in.
Yeah, flex spaces is something that we get a lot of inquiries about. And then, I didn't know, we were here a couple of weeks ago to talk about the meta-program, so you learned about that in the last couple of weeks. And then, our strategic plan process for the EDC is going really well, and we'll have a draft October 1st to review.
So, one of the other studies that I wanted to mention, we mentioned the strategic plan, is the ag tourism and land use study. That was also funded through Rural Maryland Economic Development Fund, and that has been an awesome partnership with planning and zoning, because part of their comprehensive plan update was to look at this piece. And of course, the University of Maryland Extension Office, Jenny and Lee have played an integral role in this as well. So, it's been a really great partnership. It is nearing the end as well, and we'll make sure to share that study with you when it's complete. It should be done by the end of October, and then there'll be some additional conversation after that.
The Business Ambassador Program is something that we developed as part of a USDA grant to help promote the brand that was put together a couple of years ago. And it was just a creative way, one, to promote our businesses, but also to attract other businesses in markets that we're looking to attract here in terms of amenities and services. So, we put this campaign together, we have eight business ambassadors for the launch that went out late this summer, and you can see their pictures here, some familiar faces to you, I'm sure. I don't know if you saw on social media, but there was a major social media push and some print also to get their names out there, and we have gotten several leads from this campaign, so we're very excited to be doing economic development marketing in this way. So, hopefully, you'll notice them, and we are getting businesses who want to be ambassadors, so it's pretty cool.
I mean, it was many, many years ago, we had a program in Eastern Shore to bring doctors here, same thing, you know, hook them up with an ambassador, show them around, show them the schools, show them the amenities, show them what the quality of life is, and we definitely need to bring it back, because that's the number one thing we're hearing from our senior citizens and everyone else, we don't have enough doctors, especially family practice, so keep that in mind, maybe you can add that little caveat in there somewhere too.
We've got the program in places, it would be really hard to do that. In fact, we have the Eastern Shore Urgent Care, it's one of the, and what the program, and Rebecca's done a great job of rolling this out. We're telling the story of why they came here and why they like Queen Anne's, and also promoting them. And then, in there, once they see that, if a company that's not here is like, "That sounds great!", they click on a button and they send us their information, and we've gotten a couple responses, and some of them are pretty cool, so we'll have to see how that rolls through.
To the Commissioner's point, I just had this conversation with Dr. C. maybe a year ago, specifically what he was talking about. It's a really good idea, so.
We'd be happy to help.
Especially with the new hospital, right? We want to get quality doctors, not ones that are going at the pasture.
Easy on that.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, this is a dumping ground for them.
And one of the things that we enjoy doing is, you know, working collaboratively with the different departments, with the county, so we're more than happy to share what we've done, and they can, you know, either tweak it to what they need to do and/or we can help them with that. But that makes us successful and also helps make them successful when we work together and kind of collaborate instead of everybody kind of doing their own thing, so we're more than happy to do that. The ferry feasibility study, you've most likely heard a lot about. The one thing that I wanted to point out to you on that is that, if you remember, it is a collaborative effort, a consortium between Queen Anne's, Antirundale, Calvert, Somerset, and St. Mary's, is that Antirundale applied for an infrastructure grant, the commission wrote a letter of support for that, and they actually were awarded that grant, it's a $4 million grant, for electric ferries or ASI electric ferries. And so, we'll see what happens with that, but we are excited to see that they were awarded that grant. And that would be for commuting, not necessarily the tourism aspect that we were looking at for the ferry feasibility study. Some great news that we wanted to point out are upcoming events. We, April and I, worked with the Bay Bridge Boat Show, which is going to be moving from the Bay Bridge Marina because of the construction that's going to be happening there, and they came to us, and we wanted to keep them within the county, looked around, and they landed on Safe Harbor as the next location for the Bay Bridge Boat Show, which is going to be awesome for the Kent Naroes area. The contract was just signed, and we've already reached out to Queen Anne's County Staff EMS on them, so we can start to work on the logistics of how that's going to work, but we're excited. We also found out that the Startup Roadshow, the pitch competition that we held last year with Kent County and Cecil County, we're going to be doing that again at Washington College in 2025, date to follow, and then the Waterman's Basket Tree is coming up in December, and the Bay Bridge Run is right around the corner in November. Some quick tourism stats that I wanted to share, we recently received our FY24 hotel tax revenue from finance. We didn't technically receive it, but we received the numbers. It's 1.15 million for FY24, which is a 16% increase, which is great news over FY23. In FY23, it was 991,000. Some of that has to do with, as the new hotel, you know, it's been around for a little bit now, gets underway, room rates. We also see some additional reporting from the short-term rentals that are in play now, they're paying in some taxes. That's the minor part of the increase, but, so definitely moving in the right direction as long as with our visitor stats. The state reported we had about 410 visitors in 2023, which is up close to 5% over the previous year, and they spent about $178 million, which is 6.3% over the prior year. And we've been here before to showcase our new visitors' guides, and that's what some of our marketing looks like, is we're trying to drive people to that digital guide, the request guide, so that they know all the things to do in Queen Anne's County. And we continue to do that through digital marketing, through social media, and through print.
I wanted to tell you that, that I thought the way that you guys broke it up into the three different books was brilliant. It was absolutely brilliant, because people could focus on a particular area that they wanted to know more about, and not that the rest of it, that was in, in the package when it was just one book, wasn't important, but it gave people an opportunity to focus in on the things that mattered to them or things that were important to them that they wanted to look at, so kudos on that idea.
Thank you, thank you. And we've all been working front desk this last couple of weeks, because we have a staff person out, and, you know, they come in handy, because a lot of people want to know where they can eat, want to know how to get on the trails, and they want to know what to do outdoors, and we're able to very easily share that with them. So, it's been kind of cool to see, been able to use them in real time.
Okay, and then we move to career and workforce development, we'll call it. You'll probably notice a theme throughout, I would say, one of the themes throughout our workforce development, really, we try to focus on connecting our local businesses with our youth, with Char, our future potential workforce. So, I see that all the way through, as we go through. I do want to point out that one of the rural grants that we mentioned earlier was the one that we did with Queen Anne's County Public Schools to establish a career center in each of the two high schools, along with a career coach in each of the two high schools. And it's, as you'll see, as I go through this, it's made a big difference of having someone right there at the school and a career center right there that we can work with directly, and it's with the students. But along with that, I have to say too, that our partnership with Chesapeake College is very strong too, in working with the businesses and with the schools. I have to set up really in between, there's programs, you're looking at programs, there's programs and events that we've been able to establish even stronger and then be able to sustain them with having the career coach at each high school. And the very best, often the left, the career-building internships, we now call them career-based learning rather than work-based learning, because that's something, we've been through a lot of programs across the country that it really makes sense to look at it as a career-based learning rather than just work-based learning. Not that work isn't important, but it's a combination of the education, the work, the experience, and everything. We, the Certified Youth Apprenticeships, we do, we still keep building that program and finding more and more businesses interested, and then students slowly getting the idea of those. And we're doing a lot more marketing of, I wanted to mention right along here, a lot of marketing of posts and information about businesses that have hired a recent graduate from high school, or a business that has hired a youth apprenticeship. We're doing more and more of that throughout, end of last year into this year. In the schools, there's more opportunities for businesses to be visible and connections with the students through Lunch and Learns, where they can just come in at lunchtime and the students can approach them, doing classroom lessons. We talked about student equipment scholarship, that the Upper Shore Regional Council has been great at offering that. With our career coaches, we're actually, the Queen Anne's County is using that scholarship more than the other counties around, and it's because of how we're just implementing it and connecting and communicating with the students, so they know that it's something they can use. It's helping them a lot. And next one, under internships and apprenticeships, we, both programs are just more, the strength in the internship particularly, of being really career-focused developing programs so that students are really getting a worthwhile experience and learning things that are going to help them later, along with their education. And then, the last section is with career development events. We've been able to implement more events. The one, the one at the top, you see 12 field trips, PRS was excited about having many of our seniors visiting there last year on several trips, were trying to get into different businesses. There were 12 different trips throughout the year, mostly high school, some middle school. And then, we do a huge event that we just started last year, it was very popular, very well-respected so far, with Chesapeake College, at Chesapeake College, where all, we focused on the sophomores, all the sophomores in Queen Anne's County Public Schools, Kent Island and Queen Anne, attended an event called the Career Awareness, where we connected different career fields with programs that are at Chesapeake College. So, the students got to visit at least four to five different programs happening at the college they may be interested in, and then we tried to connect that with businesses in the community, so they could see the connection between that program, maybe their interests and businesses in our community. And I even elicited businesses to come and be part of that program, and they spoke highly of having the connection with the students and getting a chance to see the programs along with the students and build those relationships. So, we're expanding on that this year. There'll be two events in February where we'll have all the sophomores again, and actually, even more businesses look like they'll be attending, and I want, we're going to try to turn it into businesses actually helping present along with the instructors at the school. There's so many things, leadership, junior achievement, we've gotten really connected in with junior achievements, so we're not only doing the JA Inspire program for all the eighth graders, this past year, we also had, all the seventh graders did the junior achievement finance part, and it just keeps growing, and we do a lot of things with leadership. This year, we also, in the past, we had started, like, in 2022, we had done the first on the Eastern Shore Information Session on Youth Apprenticeships. Last year, we expanded it to be, to be the first time in our county to have the whole National Apprenticeship Week in November, to be something happening at each day at the schools. So, we're doing that again this year, expanding it, and then we added this, here, we call it Youth Apprenticeship 2.0, encouraging many people in the community, businesses all to come and hear what youth apprenticeship is all about, and hearing from some of the businesses that have offered, and hopefully, some of the students can come back to talk about their experience. So, I have it up there, the QR code on those is for people to register and let us know if you want to come, but at the same time during that week, businesses can contact our career coaches or myself, who've actually come to the school that week to share their business with students. So, we're hoping for connection there. That all expands upon when we started the career awareness videos that we talked about in the last, we're continuing with that. I'm getting some rec- We're getting some recognition from that with even some of the national organizations like Pathful, which is, it's a great program that shows videos to help encourage, help everyone know what's available career-wise. And they're actually talking to us about getting some of ours to connect with them and actually be on that program, just to spotlight some of our businesses that we've done videos on. It's pretty exciting.
Awesome. Not going on.
Busy, busy, busy.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. Well done.
All right, commissioners, our next two presenters, we have Mr. Steve Chanley, Director of Parks and Recreation, and Mr. Steve Cahoon, Public Facilities Planner from Public Works. And this is an update on the trails projects that we have going on. All right, gentlemen, we have, this is also in your book, commissioners, if you want to turn to, again, in tab number six, item three, pages 20 through 35, and we have it up on the screen as well. All right, gentlemen, take it away.
All right. Well, thank you for inviting us to give you a quick update on where we are with all of our trail projects. As you can see on this slide, this is the overall slide of all of the six phases that we have going on in some manner or another. And basically what it does is it completes it from Mata Peak, Mata Peak Landing, all the way up to Route 50. The next couple of slides are each one of the phases. So this is Phase One. This is basically right to the, to the right of Waterman Joe's, you see the yellow line coming down. We've actually put in the base for that. That's what it looks like as today. That's Section One, it's taken care of. Section Two, we're getting ready to start in the next week or so, and that runs from the front of Mata Peak School Complex all the way through and across up to Mowbray Park, about 500 feet into the woodlands. Phase Three is when we actually enter the woods and then we go through and meet up to Phase One. If you look in the top corner, the green dash hash line is what we have already completed. Phase Four, at the top, is again Mata Peak School Complex. And what it does is we cross Route Eight there, right there in front of Christ Church, and then we run it south down to the Mata Peak Complex to connect the two trails. As we're talking about Route Eight, Mata Peak, Christ, to Christ Church, Traffic Concepts is working on the crossing there. We're going to have a light. It's a midway crossing. We met out there with SHA probably about a year ago, maybe even a year and a half ago, to see where the best site was to cross. At one point, we thought it was in Davison Road, but because of the curves and the slight hills, they decided that midway was the best. Right now, we've got an approved design review and it's getting planned. Our next step is to file the application with SHA for the right-of-way permit. We're anticipating that as this is running through its process and we'll be ready to put it out to bid for construction just as Phase Four gets completely engineered and then we'll have that bid to go out. Phase Five?
Yeah.
I'm going to turn it over to Steve on this part.
Sure. Phase Five would be constructed as part of the Thompson Creek Connector Road. Because the trail runs parallels over the road, it would be best to build those both at the same time. Currently, the county is getting some base data and information. We're doing some survey work out there for the design of the Thompson Creek Connector Road to get that road through as well as the trail. So that is in process right now. And then also with Phase Five, we're looking at an option of crossing the headwaters at Thompson Creek to connect all of the Thompson Creek area to the South Island Trail. That would open up those communities there and hundreds of residents to the South Island Trail. And we already have an easement through the shopping center property, the Food Line Shopping Center property there, the Hyatt property. So that is an easy connection we can make to that existing trail that's at Marion Quimby Drive. So we are excited about that. Phase Six is the crossing of the highway, the US 5301. How do we get across? Where do we get across? That's a big task and a big job to, or a big hurdle. So it's going to take a feasibility study to look at Phase Six. The first step is to work with State Highway, conduct a feasibility study to determine where the best crossing location would be, where State Highway would allow us to put a crossing, and where we can make the connections to the existing trail system.
So, so, so future expansion to accommodate the new bridge span, I mean, is that, that's certainly a factor that need to be taken into consideration for this?
That would be part of the feasibility study and that's, that complicates the locating. We have three potential locations that we've identified where the county owns land or has easements where we could cross. And the future plans of the Bay Crossing, the widening of Route 50 would play into that. And that's an unknown right now, so that's why we would have to work closely with MDTA and State Highway with determining where to make a crossing.
Okay, so the only reason I bring that up, because in reality, this crossover really doesn't take place until, until the state is positive on how much road they're going to need in expansion and the widening of Route 50.
It would have to consider those things. We don't, we, if we build it before the widening of 50, we want to know what the widening is going to be so that we build it appropriately, correct?
Okay. So, okay, so I'm not putting you on the spot, but timeframe?
No, at this point. That's what part of the feasibility study would have to look at. And part of the, part of locating it, a different location may have different impacts and we may be able to move forward with one as opposed to another. The three areas identified that we would like to take a closer look at with the feasibility study is going from the existing trail at Ellendale over to Pier One Road and crossing over into Terrapin Park. That would get users of the trail directly to a large established park in the county with the trail system. So that's one option. Another option is where the Thompson Creek Connector Road comes out at the Kent Landing Shopping Center, going directly over to, over the highway to Love Point Road.
We own that, that's the landing? We own that, that area there?
That's correct. That's correct. We own the land on the north side. That's why that's identified as a spot. A third option would be coming further east, going through the Cracker Barrel property, connecting to the school property and to the library property. And the ultimate goal with any of these crossings is to connect the South Island Trail with the Cross Island Trail. That's been a longstanding goal for many, many years for the county. And this feasibility study, identifying a location, would be a key part of moving that forward. And that being said, we are working with BMC on the possibility of a grant to do that feasibility study. We are hoping that we could identify some funds through BMC to do that feasibility study, and we're talking to them right now about that. So that could be moving forward later this year.
Jim's the president.
So I'll take the, the first three phases. This is the phases in the sketch, and as I said, Phase One, it's permitted and under construction. Phase Two, the Mata Peak School Complex, the Mowbray Park, as I said earlier, you know, it's permitted, we're ready to begin construction. We're looking to start on October 1. We anticipated it'd take a couple of months, probably till the end of February. And again, a lot of that is going to be, you know, very weather-dependent. We'll do some tree clearing, stone base will be installed, stormwater pipe, and obviously extensive grading. And then Phase Three is the wooded area through the back of Mowbray Park to Waterman Joe. That's in design and engineering. We're waiting on the final construction permits. We're estimating, again, starting construction on April, I'm sorry, March 5th until the end of May. And again, just like any construction project, very weather-dependent. If it's a wet winter, you know, that's going to push everything back. So we're just, you know, we're keeping our fingers crossed that we'll have some good weather to work in and be able to, you know, keep things moving.
Phase One's permitted and, and who's doing it? Who's the contractor?
We did.
We're doing it in-house?
Yeah, we put in the base. And that was just that straight shot of the picture going down.
Do you intend to do the?
Phase Two and Three. And again, if you look at Phase, Phase Two, the school complex, that's pretty much, you know, wide-open area, straight shot. We'll be able to take care of that. Then as you get into the wooded area, again, we have the ability to do that. The aerial shot's a little deceiving and the way the trail is mapped out through there, it's not like a ton of trees have to come out, so we're able to meander through. You know, obviously we'll have to take some trees out to, to complete the path and be able to get, you know, vehicles back through there. But it's not an inordinate amount of work for us to take care of. Now, once we get across the street to Christ Church, that's a different story, because you've got that whole pine, pine tree area running down. You've got a lot of wet areas there, you know. We don't build bridges. We don't have the equipment to, you know, to take care of all those trees and get that taken care of. So we'd like to probably, you know, put that out as a bid to design, build, and engineer all in one and let someone go in there who has the right equipment and who can go ahead and take care of it in an expedient manner.
For Phase Five, we are currently working on the design of the Thompson Creek Connector Road and the trail. We will need funding for construction of the road. Phase Six, the overpass, we will be looking, we are seeking grant funds to do a feasibility study for the best location for the pedestrian overpass.
How much is the feasibility study for the overpass?
In talking to our partners at BMC, they said about 120 to 150,000 for what we're looking at each. So, and then switching gears, we did want to let the, let the commissioners know we are making progress on the cross-county connector trail extension. Earlier this year, the county commissioners, you guys had adopted the 2024 Queen Anne's County Pedestrian and Bicycle Master Plan. We used that master plan to get an $80,000 grant through the Baltimore Regional Transportation Board, the BMC. And that $80,000 grant is being administered through BMC and they are, have a consultant on board and we're working on a feasibility to extend the cross-county connector trail from Long, Long Point Park east to the Nesbit Road overpass. That would get us 2.8 miles closer to Queenstown. And with that feasibility study, we're also looking at the ability of, is there a possibility of getting across either the Chester River Beach Road overpass or the Nesbit Road overpass so that we can make a bike and pedestrian connection to Main Street in Graysonville? If we are able to make that happen or if it is feasible, then that would open up our trail system to all the residents of Graysonville. They could cross the overpasses to get to the trail system to, to access all the places and locations that the trail gets to. So that's in process right now. We are working with RKNK as the consultant that, that BMC has selected through their RFP process. And we should have a feasibility study to lay out the, the concepts by the end of the year on that. This is the route that's shown in the, in the Bike and Pet Master Plan. This is the route that we're, we're kind of following. You know, this is, we're doing a feasibility study to see where we need right-of-way, can we fit the trail in these locations? Do we need additional right-of-way? Do we have to go to property owners or can it fit in the state highway right-of-way and county right-of-way? And so that's, that's the work that's going on now.
That Project D, if it's anywhere along that trail, proposed trail, is that out in the roadway or is that all off-roadway?
It's a combination, because in, in some of those areas, there's a state highway parcel where we can get off the road into the wooded area, but a lot, several areas, it's along the roadside in the state highway right-of-way. And in some areas, we're looking at options where it might be a better, where we might be contacting property owners to see if there, if there are options to, to get off-road. But this is just looking at, at what's possible and, you know, are there options, are there alternative routes? Yep.
When are you looking to do that?
That's in process now and it'll be, it'll be completed by the end of the year. The goal, if you can see the, the property on the right-hand side of the screen is, is the Queen, is the Queenstown Harbor Links property. So we're trying to get to the golf course property and ultimately to the town of Queenstown.
To go to Centerville.
And then to Centerville.
And again, that's, that's the feasibility study. That's the feasibility study. Construction is not yet.
Building starts 2025 to Centerville. I appreciate that, guys.
That's the first step.
And then the, the last project as far as the feasibility study is the Cross Island Trail Extension to Graysonville. And again, that's crossing.
Yes, seeing if we can cross either one of the overpasses to get to Main Street in Graysonville. If we can, it opens up, you know, the trail to all those residents, gives them a bike, bike and pet option that doesn't currently exist.
So tell me what it's going to cost for Phases One through Five. What's your best guess?
I think your most expensive.
Not doing it in-house, subbing it out?
Right. Your most expensive portion is going to be four, Section Four, coming down from Christ Church down to Mata Peak because of all that, that work.
Work because it's, it's wet, marshy?
It's wet, it's, there's a lot of trees that have to take down. You got to build some boardwalks.
We got him so spooked, he didn't want to put a number out there.
I don't want to put a number. I mean, we are still continuing to utilize program open space funds as well as, you know, county funds, as you know, that we've submitted for, you know, continuation of the, the trail project. The only problem is, you know, POS ones have now kind of come back down to reality because of the, the change in the market as far as selling homes, because it's based on the transfer tax where we get our money. Where previous years, during the high times, we were getting about $400,000 a year from POS. Now we're brought back down to reality. We're probably getting about between 180 to probably 200,000 on a, on a good year. So that's, you know, a combination. And we've reached out and we tried to get some grants. Unfortunately, we were unsuccessful in that because again, you know, everybody's, you know, competing for that as well. But again, I think as you get more and more close to tying the, the trail end, you know, you have that missing link, I think that makes for a better grant project.
You can certainly, you could put together some estimates for us to complete those first five phases and.
You know, no disrespect, but we got to do better than that because, you know, the Cross Island Trail, South Island Trail, were built, what, 24 years ago, 25 years ago?
At least, yeah.
We've resurfaced them after 20 years and we still don't have this done. And that's not, you know, it's just the way it is. I've been a commissioner almost 11 years, still don't have this done. I think as commissioners, I'm not going to speak for anybody else, but I want to see this project done. I want to see the studies done, I want to see the construction done, I want to know what it's going to cost and let us worry about if we so deem it necessary, we'll find the money. But to hold a project up because of a $120,000 study, that's crazy. I mean, so I'd like to see some numbers for the whole project, including studies, whatever the case may be. Six, I understand going over Route 50, that's, that's a whole different animal, but we can start that study. But the rest of this, you know, we need to find another gear. You know, because I, looking at it now, I have no confidence that that could be done in two years. And, and that's not, it's just the way it is. I mean, I know there's so much that's going on in here with, you know, getting permission to use certain properties, what are we going to do and how are we going to do it? Permitting, wetlands, the whole nine yards, it's, it's a struggle, but I think 24 years is long enough. So, I mean, this to me is, is right up there with the priorities. So I'm not going to speak for you guys, but that's, that's where I sit.
I'm with you.
I agree.
Yeah, so, you know, I think that we need, we need to get a dollar mount, we need to, you know, focus on getting this done, you know? I mean, and I think we should do it out of, out of house. I think we should get a contractor in there. That way, you know, it makes it a little bit easier and doesn't take, using all your resources, I think that's a mistake. So you guys are busy enough and you're doing a great job at all the parks, but this is that last piece that we need to get done. And, and, you know, the, going to Queenstown, cutting over Route 50, I agree. And so if we need to work on the state, just realigning those lines and give us a bike path through there, that opens up Seaback, that opens up, you know, all of Graysonville and tying them together. Chris is dying to be able to drive to my house and me to his house. Chris is dying to be able to drive to my house and me to his house, so. And I know Phil's already on the road.
I mean, you have to understand that this kind of drawings and this kind of stuff, it makes, I mean, this is what people can get excited about. People that use our trails. And then the connectivity, I mean, we ride our bikes down Main Street in Graysonville, get on the overpass at Chester River, and then we drive down past and get on, you know, there at the Royal Farms. But, I mean, to be able to go all the way to Queenstown, you know, I mean, that's, I mean, these are the kinds of things, or being able to, you know, leave Ken Island High School and be able to go the way down to Roman Coke, you know, and do it safely and not have to be on Route Eight. I mean, these are the kinds of things that people can identify as taxpayers, you know? This is a tangible thing that they can, they can picture in their mind, using. And I agree with Jim. I mean, this second gear, let's just go past second gear.
You ought to take a road trip down Fifty towards Washington and get off on Kenilworth, southbound, which is two ninety-five, and look at the two pedestrian bridges they just built, two blocks from each other. And, you know, I just.
On two ninety-five?
Yeah.
Two ninety-five, okay. On south, south.
Beautiful, I mean, just a great job. So I just, we need to, you know, I'm sure to say I want a mandate, you know, but I think we need to just take these phases, here's what's left, here's what it's going to cost, and let's go.
Sure.
I mean, if the money's tying you up and slowing you down, and, you know, that's our department, yeah.
We can pull that together, put a schedule together, put the phases and dollars to it.
Because we're still, you know, the access road, you know, through Target. I mean, you know, that's gone back and forth for over three years now. And, you know, that's huge. Excuse me?
That's the connector they're talking about, right?
Yeah, that's part of the puzzle that we need to get done as well.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, I just, I mean, I know, I mean, I know we're shorthanded when it comes to engineering staff and everything else, but again, if we have to sub something out, then, you know, it makes sense to me. So, but thank you.
Just so I understand, the wetland and the trees, is it, do you mean Camp Wright to Mata Peak? Is that the part you're talking about?
Yeah, we're going to be on that side of the road.
Are they being? Are they helping?
Yeah, Camp Wright has given us an easement, so we're.
Okay, so it's just a matter of cutting the trees down and?
It's getting the project engineered.
I mean, anybody that's gone across the Bay Bridge in the last three or four months sees, that's exactly what they're doing right now, from College Parkway all the way to Sandy Creek. That's a bike trail.
All the way up, all the way up College Park, all the way up to Route Two.
And you know how I hate to lose.
It actually goes to the airport.
You know, I've got a face to it, and I want to say, look, I'm riding on mine, you know, so. And ours has got the better scenery, instead of looking at Route Fifty traffic, so, you know.
That's right.
Yeah. Anyways, moving on.
Just sent you an email about a company that makes long bridges and narrow. Take a look at it.
Excellent.
It's called Roadrunner, they're out of Texas. And I copied these guys, so, who knows? Instead of, they'll drop it in on a weekend. They don't have to build the roads the way we're doing it.
Thanks, Scott.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. No tractors, no lawn mowers, no nothing?
Oh, no, he's, no, it's coming up.
I'm still here for that.
All right, commissioners, that is all of our presentations for this evening, except for one later we have. So we can move into the action items. If you want to turn to tab number three, we've got nine action items this evening. So tab three, item one, on page one, the first item we have is Proclamation Twenty-Four-Dash-Thirty-Six. This is for National Senior Center Month.
I got that. Is that, but you're the senior really here.
Do you want me to read it? I can do it.
Okay. I don't want to be titled that, you're the senior by six months.
That's right, I forgot about that. Okay, Proclamation Twenty-Four-Dash-Thirty-Six. Whereas the Queen Anne's County Area Agency on Aging celebrates National Senior Center Month in September twenty twenty-four with the theme Powering Connections. And whereas older Americans are significant members of our society, investing their wisdom and experience to help enrich and strengthen our community. And whereas the Active Aging Center, Graysonville Senior Center, Ken Island Senior Center, and Sublosville Senior Center act as a catalyst for mobilizing the creativity, energy, vitality, and commitment of the older residents of Queen Anne's County. And whereas, though the wide array of services, programs, and activities senior centers empower older citizens of Queen Anne's County to contribute to their own health and well-being and the health and well-being of their fellow citizens of all ages. And whereas the Active Aging and Senior Centers have been a community partner in ensuring that our most vulnerable citizens are able to stay connected, safe, and healthy. And whereas the four senior centers in Queen Anne's County affirm the dignity, self-worth, and independence of older persons by facilitating their decisions and actions, tapping their experiences, skills, and knowledge, and enabling their continued contribution to the community. And now therefore, we, the county commissioners of Queen Anne's County, do hereby proclaim September twenty-fourth, excuse me, September twenty twenty-four as Senior Center Month. We call upon all citizens to recognize the special contributions of the senior center, participants, and the special efforts of the staff and volunteers who work every day to enhance the well-being of the older citizens of our community. Signed, the Queen Anne's County Commissioners. And I can tell you, myself and Scott Haas, we're at the forum, the town hall in Graysonville, great questions, and we actually got out of there under time. We answered everything, nothing left. We even took on some traffic, so life is good. There you go, boss.
Thank you, Commissioner Moran, appreciate that. All right, item number two, on pages two through four, this is the contract that has been submitted by our Department of Parks and Recreation to replace the playground at the Fisher Manor for the Housing Authority. They are recommending the contract with Game Time to replace the existing playground there for ninety-one thousand, three hundred and four dollars and eighty-eight cents, and also install a playground fence for seven thousand dollars, seven thousand sixty-five dollars.
I move to authorize the Department of Parks and Rec to contract with Game Time to replace the existing two to twelve-year-old playgrounds at Fisher Manor in the amount of ninety-one thousand, three hundred and four and eighty-eight, utilizing the Omnia Contract, two zero one, seven hundred, eleven thirty-four. I also move to authorize the Department of Parks and Rec to contract with the Brainsfield Fence Company to install a perimeter fence in the amount of seven thousand sixty-five dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on this item?
Actually, I know this very well. The, I mean, it's right there in front of their houses. How's the fence gonna, how's the fence gonna work out there?
Well, it keeps everybody contained, so they don't run out into the parking lot.
So it's two feet high, three feet?
It'll be seven, four, probably four feet high. I don't have, I don't think I have.
It's all good.
Kind of like what you would have around the playground at Mowbray Park, right?
Correct.
So little kids won't run off if the car's coming up.
It's such a tight area.
It is, it really, I mean, the houses are, the apartments are right there.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, so moved.
All right, thank you, Steve, for partnering with our Housing Authority, Mr. Clark, so that's a great addition to Fisher Manor, appreciate that. Yep, thank you. All right, commissioners, item number three, on pages five through seventeen, this is for Waterman's Farming LLC. It's a minor TDR subdivision and amended deed of open space. This was a rather complicated one, and I hope this is the last effort on this particular property, but this is submitted by Doug Summers. This is an amended deed of open space easement. The owner has submitted a minor subdivision application to relocate one lot and utilize the remaining three TDRs and create two new residential lots and one residential building pad on Lot Four. As a result, the existing TDR receiving open space will actually increase by zero, zero point zero two-two acres up to ten point five four-nine acres. So this does require amendment to the existing open space, and the existing ag TDR transfer open space area remains the same at forty-eight acres. So there is an exhibit in your book that shows all this. I know they worked very hard to work out all the details out on this particular.
I move to execute the amended deed of open space easement for the Waterman's Farming LLC Amendment Plan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, so moved.
All right, thank you, commissioners. Item number four, on pages eighteen through thirty-nine, this is a Rural Legacy Grant Agreement for Lands End for Island Creek Farm LLC. And this is the FY twenty-five Rural Legacy Grant that was submitted in January and approved by the Board of Public Works in August for funding one million, sixty-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars for this Lands End Rural Legacy area. And we have Donna Smith and Joe Pippin here, if you have any questions. Two hundred and eleven acres.
I move to execute the Lands End Rural Grant Agreement for Island Creek Farm LLC in the amount of one million, sixty-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
Second.
Yep.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
And there are no county funds used in this easement acquisition?
No county funds.
Correct.
We like that a lot.
So we roll. You want to put a plug in, or are you good?
This just adds to the thirteen million, this will put us over fourteen million for the year for easement acquisition. The nice thing about this, as Mr. McLaughlin said, there's no county funds. DNR pays for the survey, DNR pays for all legal fees, total commitment. And basically, the landowner shows up, paperwork, and the farm is preserved.
Jack, didn't we tell them we wanted them to get twenty million?
Yeah, she's falling short this year.
It's all good.
I'm heading down the slide.
You've got to go out strong.
We're getting, we're creeping closer and closer to Carroll County.
This will be twenty-four parcels this year that we're going to preserve.
Nice.
Yeah, so that's the most ever in the program history.
We're actually ahead of Carroll for this year.
Are we?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
And, Jack, you had asked me to look up overall where we're at in the state on all preservation. We are number one in the state for all preservation. Yes, through all forms of.
Carroll's only got us on mail.
County easement, Rural Legacy, Maryland Environmental Trust, everything. We are far and above Carroll County. They have like seventy-five thousand acres in the entire county, we're at ninety-one thousand now.
Picking a hundred thousand by the next meeting, huh?
He just tells them now.
Yeah.
Yeah, like I had said to the governor, we're fourteen years ahead of the thirty-by-thirty and forty-by-forty. Sixteen years, sorry.
Nice.
Yep, so, we did put an informational item on you in your packet that is for CRP permanent easements, we did want to talk about that. We are extremely overwhelmed with that. And that's another DNR program that takes no county money, same thing. And it takes the most susceptible ecologically, environmentally sensitive areas. Joe has talked to a lot of landowners about that.
A lot of interest.
And it is where you're taking the most marginal land on the property that's most susceptible to erosion, and it's put in through US, it's a cooperative agreement with the United States Department of Agriculture. And they take those filter strips that you see along ditches and woodland and waterways, and it takes them out of permanent production. They can never be brought back into crop land, but has to be maintained as either a riparian forest buffer, a created wetland, or a grass buffer forever. And they are now doing, we've always had this program, but it hasn't been very economically viable for the farmers or landowners to put it into a permanent easement. But the rates per acre have gone up by like fivefold. They were approximately two thousand dollars an acre, now it's approximately six thousand dollars an acre. And they do a ten-to-one match with woodland.
Really?
So every acre of CRP, which for people that don't know what CRP is, it's Conservation Reserve Enhancement Program, and it's a USDA program that takes out very marginal lands and hydro soils out of crop production to protect waterways. So they also are being, have had a large initiative to preserve forest land, because it is important. It's green infrastructure and it's for water quality. So DNR has crafted the new CREP easements to be an acre woodland matched to every acre of CRP. And we have probably about nine thousand acres of CRP land in the county. So if you do.
So is that county Army Corps streams that are cut up all through North County everywhere?
It doesn't necessarily have to be on a stream. It can be.
Hydro soil, that's it.
They call it a resource need. So if you have something that has a little bit of a slope to it, or it's susceptible to erosion, that's eligible to be put into CREP. And that's where our office, the Soil Conservation Planters, go out and do an actual field visit and do a soil assessment of susceptibility to erosion or non-tidal wetlands or bordering a stream. And you can put in thirty-five feet up to a hundred and fifty feet across those areas.
Notice, all those areas are overgrown, they're used for nothing. Like, up where I'm at, and all across from where I'm at, if you just follow that stream, it goes for miles, and it's just, literally, it's just wooded on both sides, but then it opens up to a crop maybe eighty feet away from the stream, so. Would that area be what you're talking about, those kind of areas?
No, it has to be previously cropped, so it has to have that resource need of, if you're cropping it and it's eroding, then you would take it out of production. So that would be the resource need for that. And it had to have been crop land, you know, previously.
Okay.
And the nice thing about this, these strips have to be maintained. They cannot grow up in woody growth, they can't be undesirable trees, so they have to be maintained permanently. Unless they're intended on, they can plant trees in them, but it's got to be.
Native and all that kind of stuff.
Yes, a native species, and it has, there's certain criteria that you have to follow. So just, for example, if you have ten acres of CRP, you can put a hundred acres of wood, woods to match.
Basically, nine, the phone calls I'm getting is about ninety percent of landowners, farmers, already have this in place. They're getting paid through a contract through FSA. They have this in place, I got this letter from DNR, tell me about it. Tell them about it, and it's a lot of interest, because if you have, like Donna said, if you have one acre of CRP, you know, you can do ten acres of woods at the same rate, fair market value. And they're getting the fair market value from all the mouth appraisals, which are.
So they don't, they average about sixty percent, so it's still a discounted rate. It's still a discounted payment rate, but it's another avenue of preservation. The thing is that it's cooperatively agreement through USDA and through DNR. Not every state has this, but it's a big focus for water quality. So.
It's a one-time purchase.
Correct.
Right, yes.
Correct, it's a one-time payment. And the payments that they get for their CREP through FSA, which is Farm Service Agency, that's USDA agency, they would then stop, so they can't double-dip. They don't continue to get the payments from USDA for taking that out of crop production, but they get a one-time payment from DNR to permanently retire this land.
Right.
So we have the potential of getting a lot of acres at no county cost, which is fabulous.
Busy.
And I've asked them what the budget is, and they said there's no budget.
There you go. I'd worry more about that right now.
Yeah, we'll see what happens in another year or so. And I figured up one, or Joe and I figured up one. He had about forty acres of CRP, and he has over three hundred acres of woodland, his payment's going to be over two million dollars.
Coming from the feds. Very nice.
DNR.
Yeah.
DNR.
Yeah. All right, well, before we forget to do this.
Just as another informational item.
Before we forget to do this, we'll execute the Lands End Rural Grant Agreement for Island Creek Farm LLC in the amount of one million, sixty-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, so moved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, commissioners, moving on. Item number five, on page forty, this is a request for the, this year's Christmas Angels for some funding for their program this year that came in from Linda Austin. Hard to believe, it's almost Christmas time, but they are seeking donations to provide Christmas gifts, including clothing, toys, hygiene kits, blankets for children in need. They have anticipated over fifteen hundred children that will be in the program again this year. Last year, we provided a ten thousand dollar donation to this.
Should this same one? Because I know there's multiple organizations that come to us at Christmas.
Yeah, it was this one, yeah.
But this one, we did?
Last year, we did, we supported them with a ten thousand dollar donation.
I think we should support more.
I move to funding in the amount of twelve thousand dollars. Fifteen thousand dollars for, it's ten dollars per kid for the twenty twenty-four Queen Anne's County Christmas Angels Program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yeah, so, I was actually talking with Linda Austin about this over the weekend. Fifteen hundred kids in Queen Anne's County only, that they make sure that they get Christmas gifts, so every kid has a Christmas. Quarters companies gives Linda room to store all of these gifts throughout the year, that's free. Linda and her husband use their trucks to sort of pick up the stuff and get it around, and all of that is done at their donation, right? Linda, uh, and her husband use their trucks to sort of pick up the stuff and get it around and all of that is done at their donation, right? So every penny that goes to this goes to the kids getting gifts. And, um, there's a lot of people who pick up the, you know, the, the tags and donate the gifts as well from the families. And that's great. And I encourage every citizen to do that. Whatever doesn't get used this year, she stores them the year, so the next year that she'll have a stockpile because she wants to make sure that there is always a Christmas for kids. So this is a great program to make sure the kids get to have Christmas.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? No? Okay. So this is move to funding in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars for the twenty twenty-four Queen Anne's County Christmas Angels Program. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So moved.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. Item number six on pages forty-one through forty-three is the FY twenty-five Emergency Services Ambulance Purchase Contract. And DES EMS Services is requesting purchase of two twenty-twenty-four Ford F-five-fifty four-by-four ambulances using the Houston-Galveston area pre-established government contract for seven hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred and six dollars. And there is adequate funding in their budget for these purchases.
I move to authorize the Director of Department of Emergency Services to purchase two twenty-twenty-four Ford F-five-fifty four-by-fours Horton Model six-twenty-three ambulances piggybacking off the Houston-Galveston Area Council Procurement Program from Fesco emergency sales for the amount of seven hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred and six dollars and no sense.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Is the delivery time next year?
So we're looking at next year, probably like big spring, uh, early summer, which.
That's fast.
Jess Evans Zeller is in charge of our EMS fleet and Jess wanted to see the project all the way through. That's why she's here tonight. She's also on duty tonight. So she's listening to her radio really close. Uh, Jess spent a lot of time finding this because our normal turnaround right now is about two, two and a half years from the time to order to the time of delivery. We have a, we have a transport unit currently on order that we ordered last fiscal cycle. And we're not expecting delivery until next fiscal cycle is how bad it is. But Jess was able to find this actual deal. As another jurisdiction was in line with Fesco sales for two transport units that they backed out of. And they're allowing us to continue to stay in their line. So we're able to get these earlier.
Nice.
So what new technology is going to be on these beasts from say a few years ago?
Probably one of the coolest features we're going to have this time is the three sixty cameras on the exterior. We're finding sometimes we have difficulty backing into narrow spaces and that kind of stuff. So that's definitely a big upgrade this year. That's something that we haven't had before.
And the striker beds?
Yep.
Where you just press the button, it lifts up a four hundred pounder?
Seven hundred pounds.
Seven hundred pounds.
We were doing the math before this, between the stretches now and then the self-loading systems that go in there, it's almost sixty-three thousand dollars.
Have you guys ever seen that? It, it's amazing. And then it just clicks onto the back and the patient just goes right in.
Definitely a back saver.
Oh, it's beautiful.
Oh, yeah.
I wish we had them when I was in the field. I wouldn't walk hunched over now.
Scott used to be six-five. I don't know that.
Scott, were you ever in the field?
Statute of limitations on that lawsuit run out, dude.
Back in the fifties?
I worked with Tom playing one good.
Yeah, that works comp thing won't fly, pal. That statute of limitations over.
So you're, you're saving, am I correct in saying you're saving about three hundred thousand dollars on this deal? I mean, normally they're around five hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, yes. Like I said, she found a very good deal for us.
eBay? And that's why you jumped on two? Is that why you took two?
You did a lot of this. No, well, we planned on doing two. The, the last time we received delivery of a transport unit, if you go to the history of our capital projects, it's back in twenty-twenty-one. So it's been almost four, five years since we've had a new unit come into the fleet. Part of that was because we got two units through COVID. And it was paid for by the federal government, which, uh, pushed us back from purchasing units for quite a while. Our latest one that we were able to purchase or place on order was last fiscal cycle. And again, it's going to be another probably year before we see that one. But we're, we're really aging our fleet right now. And Jess's biggest frustration is everything's out of service because we have such an aging fleet. So we're in desperate need of these two units.
Awesome. All right. Well, again, uh, moving to authorize the Director of Department of Emergency Services to purchase two twenty-twenty-four Ford F-five-fifty four-by-four Horton Model six-two-three ambulances piggybacking the Houston-Galveston Area Council Procurement Program from Fesco emergency sales for the amount of seven hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred and six dollars. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So moved.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Hopefully we'll still be here when they come in, so. Two years, right? Yeah.
See, it worked. It worked. See, it worked.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners, our final three items are from the EDF Economic Development Incentive Funding Committee. First one, uh, the ED, the EDIF is, Commission is recommending the approval of a ten thousand dollar grant, uh, from the EDIF Workforce Fund to PRS guitars for training and professional development of his management and staff. Training will be provided through the Maryland Manufacturing Extension Partnership and, and Vision Excellence Program focusing, focusing on leadership. Ten thousand dollar, excuse me.
Yep, go ahead, Patrick.
Would you like to make the motion? I move to approve the disbursement of ten thousand dollars from the Economic Development Incentive Fund for training and professional development to PRS guitars. The disbursement of funds is contingent upon a signed agreement between Economic Development Incentive Fund Commission and PRS. And we'll outline the conditions of the agreement and performance of the project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
And one of, uh.
Absent.
Absent, yeah. Okay.
So that's three-one-one?
Three-one-one, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, item eight on pages forty-six through forty-eight is a request for Economic Development Incentive Funding for the Ten Acre Brewery. They're recommending approval of a conditional loan of fifty thousand dollars, allowing expansion and increasing production capacity to reach new markets and improve customer service by adding additional fermentation tanks and outdoor seating. They are going to add two new full-time jobs and one part-time position as part of this request, which would then convert to a grant if they fulfill that obligation.
I move to approve the disbursement of up to fifty thousand from the Economic Development Incentive Fund to Ten Acre Brewery LLC for the purchase of equipment and outdoor seating. The disbursement of funds is contingent upon a signed agreement between Economic Development Incentive Fund Commission and the Ten Acre Brewery LLC. And we'll outline the condition of the agreement and performance of the project in accordance with the application submitted to the Economic Development Incentive Fund Commission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So moved, Fabio.
All right, Commissioners, thank you. And our last item this evening, action item, is, uh, item number nine on pages forty-nine through fifty-two. Another request for EDIF funding. This is for Rural Roots Culinary Market. And they are recommending approval of a conditional loan of fifty thousand for Arne's Chocolate and Confections for the startup of the Rural Roots Culinary Market. Shared commercial kitchen and retail space for local culinary professionals in Queen Anne's County at, uh, one, one oh four Price Station Road in Centerville. This will create two new full-time equivalent positions and three part-time positions.
Say it's a loan?
I move.
It's a conditional loan that converts to a grant as long as they fulfill their, um, employment obligations, uh, for five years.
I move to approve the disbursement of up to fifty thousand in the Economic Development Incentive Fund Commission, Arne's Chocolate and Confections for the purchase of equipment to create and outfit the Rural Roots Culinary Market. The disbursement of funds is contingent upon a signed agreement between the Economic Development Incentive Fund Commission and the Arne's Chocolate and Confections. And we'll outline the conditions of the agreement and performance of the project in accordance with the application submitted for the Economic Development Incentive Fund Commission.
Second.
Is this the old, uh, restaurant out there?
Yeah.
So, so is this?
Amazing.
It's a restaurant. It's a, it's a teaching school and a catering business.
That was going to be my question. So this will be a culinary school as well?
This will be a culinary, um, a commercial kitchen culinary center for, um, existing culinary entrepreneurs to come in and make food. So if you're in the cottage industry, like someone who makes food for the farmer's market, they can come in and use this commercial kitchen to process their food.
Okay, so it's not a culinary school, but it's a, it's a, it's a shared co-op type of thing.
The old two country chicks restaurant right there in Price.
It meets and you meet a lot of calls.
Well, Vernas, whatever, yeah. It's been a lot of things.
Industry looking for this and we, we've been very limited in what we have available.
Is that the one that enters to Leager's Farm?
Yes, yes. The old Verda's.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
No, it's been a lot of things.
Yeah, it's been a lot of things.
Adderall, two country chicks.
Is the one next to the, uh, the Wawa or Royal Farms, whatever, is the one that's under construction now? Has that got a culinary school in it?
Uh, no, it won't be, yeah, Kurt Peter. It won't be a culinary school, but he will potentially have some space that he's willing to sublease out, but it's mainly for him. And he will have a, a market in the front of that as well.
What is it?
He does, uh.
The one that's under construction now.
What is it going to be?
Um, the, the one they were asking about is.
The Royal Farms.
That's going next to, um, Rural Farms in Graysonville.
Okay. I'm not going to read that all over, but it sounds like confectionery and chocolates is good with me. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Heather. Thank you, Rebecca.
Why did Vernas go out of business? It was great food.
Not enough people using the location. That's why any business fails. No end users.
I think that was packed when I went there.
Commissioners, that's all the action items for this evening. We can move into press and public comments if there are any.
Would anybody like to speak? Anybody like to speak?
Chris, any press and public comments?
Uh, we have no one virtual, but we did get, um, about six emails on two separate topics that I can just summarize for you if you wish.
Please do.
Cool. Uh, first up, there's four, and this is concerning, um, I think one of the items that you guys have just put out to, to be introduced. This is the Chester Haven Development. Um, these four emails come from Georgia Ann Pinkard of Queenstown, Rick Tokash, Mary Carlisle, and the final one is from Jenny and Bruce Abel. In summary, they were all opposed to the Chester Haven Development, citing environmental concerns such as animal habitat and protecting wetlands and the overall overdevelopment of the area. And that is for that topic. And then second topic was for the Airbnb short-term rentals. One, basically this email was just, um, it's kind of, I've, you're probably going to have to read it. It's not really an email per se. It's pretty much just, they list an issue and their version of every solution. Um, this is from Robert J. Bateman of Stevensville. Yeah, it doesn't even read as an email. It's just kind of, like I said, more of a, a summary of his ideas for it. So basically saying that he's not really against it, but at the same time, this is the best way to go about it. Uh, and the second email is from Mike Batza of Sagwell Farms citing the same thing, saying that, uh, there will be, it is his understanding that the council is considering legislation that would require a minimum of thirty days any, for any short-term rental. And that's pretty much it. Yes.
Okay. So roundtable. Um, let's finish with Jack. So Patrick?
I, I just, I got to read more about the short term. I, I own a, a rental house. And I do short weekends for twenty years with no problems. So it's a matter of the property management company that we hire that takes care of it if there's a problem. But to do a minimum of thirty days, that's just, I don't think that's right. But I'll, I'll pass my time to Jack.
Pierce? I think I could pass too. How long did I have?
Yeah, I think I'm going to, I think I'm going to.
We might chime in as you're.
Yeah, I'm gonna, um.
I hope so.
I'm going to defer my time to Jack as well.
Let's see if anyone needs to talk about the bridge first.
Anything you want to discuss the bridge or anything?
Yeah, go through my short thing before you go through your long thing. Okay.
I think it passed.
You got to rephrase that. That did not sound good.
We'll keep that out of the minutes.
I guess, uh, I'm, I'm going to talk about, um, two or three things. First, like I said, the, uh, senior centers, Kathy Willis and her team is doing a phenomenal job with our area on aging, setting up these forums. People get, you know, there's a spectrum of questions, everything from how come my internet costs so much to why can't we get a dentist in one of the senior centers on a regular basis? I mean, just really good, I mean, they were good questions. So I think we answered a lot of things there and it was good to see, uh, a good sized crowd there. So, you know, I want to thank her and, and, uh, her team for, for putting that on this year again. Uh, the Bay Bridge, last Thursday, myself and County Resident Nick Deodis and, uh, Jack Broderick went up on the Bay Bridge at nine-thirty at night, saw them cut a section out, cut the welding, picked that big boy up and swing it out over to the barge and bring a whole new one in and drop it in. And they're doing it in less than three hours. So they did two that night and, uh, it was, you know, it, it, when you see that many people doing that, that type of work and, and it's, it's, they're synchronized. And it just, I was impressed. Uh, I was impressed with how they do it and, and why they're doing it and, and how they're tying it all back together. Those, those panels are only basically touching on four points. Each corner is on a shim plates that they're bronze. I guess they had to put bronze inside of steel and, you know, for all different things for corrosion and whatnot and, and welding them in place. So, uh, and it, you know, as everybody remembered, when they started, they had the grates. Well, the grates were breaking free. So now what they're doing is on the lip area of the, where they're going to tie together, they just basically put six mil plastic down, poured concrete into that spot with anchors. And once they set it, now they're going to start coming through and they're going to do two panels a night where the panels are existing. They'll pick out those pieces, pour concrete in between them with rapid set, and it'll be open with three thousand PSI strength by, by five AM in the morning. So.
That would, so that was going to be a question I was going to ask because, you know, driving across that bridge, it's like.
And that's what it is, those pieces. And then once they pour the concrete, they get enough of the section done, they're going to come through and they're going to mill it. They're going to groove it. So that's going to help get rid of that also. So.
Where are they making the pieces, Jim?
Uh, up in Curtis Bay. So they're bringing down on a barge, five, six at a time. And the old pieces are, they've thrown them out at Hackett's Shoals, right there at entrance into Indianapolis and Sub River Bridge. Excuse me, to Sub River Outaways. I mean, I want to say it's, it's not right at the entrance, but that's where they're all going. They're dropping those pieces in there to make a reef. So they're trying to get, get a reef made. So it was, uh, it was very interesting watching it. I kind of, you know, that bridge, anybody that's run it, walked it, have been on it when it's not, you're not moving. It bounces a lot.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Well, there's the guys underneath and they're torching, right? And they've got these I-beams set up and they got hydraulic jacks because they get everything cut and the, the deck will drop about a, maybe a half inch. The last guy that cuts it, you get this, dum, and it, the deck shakes. And I think, oh my God, we're going in the water, you know? Nobody gave you a warning, you know what I mean? So anyway, so it was, it was interesting how they did that. And then hydraulic jacks, you basically get the, get the section above, you know, so if this is the existing deck, it pushes it so the bottom of it's above that, then the crane takes it the rest of the way. Otherwise it will chip up the concrete. So, you know, they're, they're rolling along. They, they finally got the bugs worked out. So, you know, they still say they're on schedule for next spring to be done. I don't know. The Vegas line's saying you can make money here, so we'll see.
What's the over-under?
Yeah, I don't know. So, so, because, you know, and right now they're working, they, what they're trying to do is they want to move right into phase two, which is the other side of the superstructure on the eastbound side and continue down that, that slope with what's done. Because underneath the bridge work is, is almost complete as far as you can see how far ahead they are from what they're doing. So, you know, that, that was a good thing. Uh, tomorrow, I sit in the last, I, I think there's one more. Close to this, maybe it's the second to last, the oyster recovery. And I've been sitting on this committee for two days every two months, full days, to hear a lot of things going back and forth on how we're going to save the oyster population in Eastern Bay, Y River and some other tributaries. And tomorrow's, you know, I think, I'm hoping it's our last meeting, but I might be bringing you something on oysters. And I think all of us will say, can't turn that down. So we're working on, on that to see what's happening.
And we're going to build an oyster bed for the county?
Well, the county already has some. Yeah, more, uh, but waterman too. So, you know, the problem's been spat on shell and I think that we can help increase what our watermen get and in turn increase what the sanctuaries get. So, you know, stay tuned on that one.
Is there still a problem getting those shells?
Yes. So, you know, they're, they're trying to.
Man of Shoals off of Kent.
Man of War.
Man of War.
And we're shoals.
We can't access that, right?
We can't touch that right now. That's correct. So.
There's, there's so much show there.
Yeah. Well, there's a lot of show in Texas and there's talk of putting things on, in California, putting things on trains and bringing it here. So it's, that's where we're incurring all this expense. So.
Do we know why we can't touch those?
Because of our, uh, governor.
Protections?
Yeah, they, they say no, they slap your hands. Yeah, they, they say no, they slap your hands, you know, don't go near those shells, so.
Talking about Man of War?
Yeah, yeah, they're just not, not gonna give it to us.
That's my Bay Foundation.
It slipped my mind, no, no figure. All right, well, that's it. Now, I don't have a drum roll, but.
There it is. We got a drum roll. Okay. So, yeah, I apologize in advance for this, we've probably taken normal, more than my minute and a half. But first, full disclosure, I wanna thank Beth Blasky for helping me put together, um, what is quite a bit of information, I was asked by a constituent to try to give the genesis of and the future of Kerwin, what it looks like, this is not, uh, meant to be any kind of a inflammatory, I'm bringing strictly the facts to the table, most of the commissioners here know, and I've already shared most of this stuff with them. Everything I talk about tonight and everything that's been created will be on our website, it will be there for people to take and share where they like, it's not going to Facebook or anything else, it's gonna stay county property, because it took quite a while to wrangle all this information back up, 'cause some of this information goes back as far as 2016 with some of the history. So, real quick, history of Kerwin. Uh, Kerwin was a bipartisan, um, bill passed in 2016, um, with Governor Hogan and Democratic and Republican legislatures to take a look at education funding in the state of Maryland. There was, uh, they did studies, and Maryland had fallen into the middle of the pack in the country in terms of scores and assessments, so they wanted to look at a way of, um, how are we going to increase our productivity and the output of our students, and look at how, how that was gonna look funding-wise. So from basically sixteen to roughly late eighteen, early, yeah, late eighteen, um, the Kerwin Commission, which was the group that met to come up with what became the Five Pillars of Kerwin, which are, number one, it's for early childhood education, which was to establish, um, basically three- and four-year-old pre-K in all of our existing, uh, schools. The second was to create a atmosphere for teachers that was both financially rewarding, um, and also to create avenues for them to, um, get further educated, get national certifications, things like that, and make the money available, as well as raising the minimum teacher's starting salary in all counties to sixty thousand dollars. Um, third was the college and career readiness, which kind of, um, baked in the CTE programs, and to, uh, advance them in all the high schools, um, establish, uh, relationships between high schools and colleges, so that we could focus on getting kids who weren't college-bound, also career-bound in other, uh, avenues of interest. Third was, um, basically what became the, uh, equity portion of it, to, uh, help underserved areas, uh, that were traditionally left behind in terms of funding, teacher resources, school resources, things of that nature, became what is the, uh, basically compensatory ed or low income, um, to lift all schools up, basically the, uh, philosophy of float all the boats. Um, and then the last was to establish the oversight, because that was one thing that everybody felt that in education spending is, is, in general, um, oversight is the one thing that's been overlooked. And, um, so the, uh, what is now known as the Accountability Implementation Board is established, and their job, as they, uh, move forward with it, and as Kerwin continues to be adopted, and I say that word continues, because all portions of Kerwin have not been put in place. We are, uh, constantly moving towards what is the, basically the 2027, 2028 timeframe, when all parts and pieces of Kerwin should be firmly in place, and basically, at that point, all of the fiduciary, uh, everything fiduciarily tied to Kerwin will be in place as well. So as you hear us talk about the 2027 cliff, that is the budget cycle that all of the teachers must be up to sixty thousand dollar minimum, uh, starting salaries, um, actually twenty-six, twenty-seven budget, but. Um, so, that gets us up to 2019, when the initial bill, which basically passed the Five Pillars I just stated, went into place in the session in 2019. Um, also, what was adopted was a, uh, to have the Kerwin Commission go back and, and create what would be the funding mechanisms to achieve all these goals. Um, I was not on the Kerwin Policy Commission, but I was appointed after the 2018 election, uh, as the member of Mako, um, from rural counties to represent on Kerwin for the funding portion, so I sat on the funding portion of the commission, which basically dealt with, Department of Legislative Services brought forward, uh, all of the budgetary, um, what they felt were the budgetary, uh, needs for Kerwin to be successful over a ten-year period, basically initially starting in the 2021 school year, 2020 school year, um, to 2030, so that's what they laid out. And if you could, Chris, could you bring up, it's a, there's a spreadsheet, a large spreadsheet, that's the one I wanna just keep on the screen, 'cause I, I'm gonna make more references, not that one, there's another one, that one, yeah, and I know it's gonna be tough for people to see, but again, this'll be on the website at some point, and I've always used this as what I call the Kerwin Bible, because this actually was the initial estimates put forward out of the Kerwin Funding Commission for what the effects, um, on the counties would be, what their contributions would be to make Kerwin a reality. So, I only used, obviously, Queen Anne's County, 'cause that concerned us, but they did create this for every county in the state. Um, and what I wanna point to initially is, uh, basically twenty-one was supposed to be the first year, so, when we got done with the funding recommendations, it moved forward, it, uh, it was a twenty-two to three vote, moving it to the legislature with the recommendations for the funding, and what each county would be responsible for, what would go to comp ed, what would be part of the English learner language, uh, components, uh, special needs, everything, and in 2020, I gotta make sure I get these dates right, right, in 2020, it was voted for and approved by the General Assembly, but it was then vetoed by Governor Hogan, um, the funding portion, not the, uh, the, the pillars, but the funding of the pillars at this point. Um, obviously, code hit in March of 2020, which more or less shut everything down, when the governor vetoed it in May of 2020, that now moved it to, back to the legislature to veto, which they did in turn do, and then in 2021, made final passage of the Kerwin Funding Plan. So basically, Kerwin started in 2021 from a funding aspect. And moving forward, if you look at 2021 on our sheet, Queen Anne's County's contribution, and we have two lines on there, there's a line at the very top, if you're looking at it at home, that line at the top is where Queen Anne's County was when Kerwin started, that line is a trajectory all the way across to the end, which basically held that Queen Anne's County would do what they had been doing for the last fifteen years, which was a two-and-a-half percent increase across the board, minimum to the budget, which would have put Queen Anne's County roughly in 2030 at a budget of seventy-six million, two-hundred twenty-two thousand and some dollars, I can see that far, but, um, if you go to the line below that, which has the pretty orange line at FY thirty, again, you start at 2021, which is the similar number, when you go out with what Kerwin was pushing, putting out that Queen Anne's County would have to contribute to make Kerwin whole by 2030, Queen Anne's County's contribution in 2030 would have been seventy-four million, nine-hundred thousand dollars. Now, the reason I'm using that line first is that's what was thought, when the state put this together, that that's all it was gonna take for education for Queen Anne's County to adopt all of Kerwin, pay all the teachers, take care of salary compression, take care of paying our bus drivers their raises, our maintenance workers, and all involved in the school system, that was gonna handle it. Now, by contrast, if we look at our actuals at 2025, which is this year's budget, Queen Anne's County has put in seventy-five million dollars, seventy-five million, eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand to the school budget. That was, that is more today than what Kerwin said we were gonna need in 2030. Now let that sink in. So for those that think Kerwin's going to work and has worked in terms just financially, and I'm just saying financially, I, I agree with the pillars, I agree with the concept, I'm not doubting that, I agree with teachers getting raises, but this was never gonna be financially sustainable, and their initial output, it's, it's here, the numbers prove it. If you look at where we're really gonna be in 2030, we've had our finance office look at it, with the trajectories that we know we're gonna be on to get to where we gotta be, we're literally gonna be at, I think it's ninety-three million dollars by 2030 to fund Kerwin, um, to the fullest extent, which is basically an additional twenty million dollars over initial cost estimates. Now, everybody realizes that is quite a jump from what any county in the state of Maryland was expecting. And I've heard people say that, oh, this county's doing it, this county's doing it, why can't Queen Anne's County doing it? Well, those counties that you think are doing it, they're not doing it, they're getting by right now by the skin of their teeth, it's just a matter of when the, the other shoe's gonna drop in most of their cases. I talked to the other counties, I talked to the administrators, the executives, and they're in the same boat. It is a struggle to get to these numbers, because what you're seeing here in Queen Anne's County is really just a few less zeros than what you're gonna see in Montgomery County, or Baltimore County, or any of the other counties. We're not saying we can't get there in Queen Anne's County, we're just letting you know that we can't get there and then some, because twenty million dollars over the next four years is five million dollars minimum, and we realize that. We've already budgeted in seven million for next year. That's the long and short of the financial side of where Kerwin's at today, that's the future of Kerwin, that's where it's gonna be, it's not gonna, it's law, I keep telling people, you can't change this, you can't move this, it's law, you have to provide, it's mandated. So, don't whine about what you wanna get rid of, what you don't like, it's here. The only ones that can stop this, or move it, or slow it down, is the legislature and the governor at this point, the counties, we have to roll with what's there. Some other stuff I wanted to kinda put out there, just to quell some of the rumors that you hear, and it, it's, it's just not true. So, class size, that has been a contentious issue I've heard about, we're gonna balloon our class sizes, I have the certified class average, now remember, if you've got twenty-five people in a class, and you got sixteen in another one, and you, uh, average them together, you're gonna get an average. In 2022, 23, elementary, average class size, twenty, middle school, twenty-three, high school, twenty-one. Twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four school year, elementary, twenty, middle, twenty-two, high school, twenty. Twenty-four, twenty-five school year, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty. So the class sizes have not and are not going to increase that dramatically. Again, if you happen to have a class where you have more than that, it's an average, it's not a best and worst case, it's an average. And that's basically how all schools in the state of Maryland put their numbers out, it's an average, it's not a per, per individual class, this is what we have here, and this is what we have there. In terms of Queen Anne's County's ranking, and this is the one I got on at budget time, and I, and I wanna reiterate, especially to our teachers who can advocate and help us help them, um, Queen Anne's County gets the fifth least amount of money from the state of Maryland to support our education here. Um, the spreadsheet I had up, to keep, continue using it for, um, demonstration purposes, on the low end, now remember, we're up basically ten percent from what they originally said we would put in in twenty-five. The state was supposed to give us forty-three point five million dollars this year, we received forty-two point two or one, somewhere in that range, about a one-point-three million-dollar difference. And remember, we're up ten percent, that's the state, and they're down fifty percent from what the increase, 'cause the increase was only supposed to be three-point-four total, but they cut us one-point-three. In twenty-seven, the year that we're all talking about where the cliff could hit, we're supposed, we're due an additional almost three million dollar bump in twenty-seven, twenty-six, twenty-seven, to cover our teacher salary increases. We have a lot of fear at this table up here, that that money is not coming from the state, so we're already preparing on where we're gonna have to be, 'cause it's gonna fall to county, plain and simple. What, what, it always falls to the counties, whether it's highway use of revenues, teachers' pensions, now it's gonna be teacher salary's gonna fall to counties. And guess what? Again, we're all gonna have to do it, 'cause the teacher's gotta get paid, kid's gotta go to school, and it is the law. Finally, before I let you gentlemen chime in, the last thing I had, and I gotta find, it had on the back of a sheet here somewhere, um, oh, the student population, again, on this sheet, this was all based on twenty-twenty-five numbers of Queen Anne's County, and remember, we budget based on a per pupil basis, and that reminds me of the last thing I wanna get to, but, in 2025, we were projected to have seven-thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-five kids in the Queen Anne's County school system, don't have the exact number, but I know it rides in the seventy-three-hundred kid, child range, which is two-hundred-and-twenty-five kids, if you take that times the, um, per pupil spending, it's roughly two-point-eight million dollars we would not have had to give to the school system based on the law. See, we could've followed the law there and taken that money back, but we chose not to, because it's only gonna hurt kids, it's gonna hurt the system. And finally, we are ranked twenty-fourth out of twenty-fourth in the state in terms of per pupil spending, and there is a reason for that. Many other jurisdictions, like I just stated, get a lot more money from the state, they also get what's called Title I money, which comes from the federal government for Title I schools, we in Queen Anne's County, we have one Title I school that I'm aware of in Queen Anne's County. So we don't receive a lot of those additional funds, especially for some of the compensatory ed, um, a large English learner population, large, uh, areas of poverty, which would get us additional money in there. All that money goes into the per pupil spending. Now granted, it's in that overall number you're seeing when they rank the counties, but that money's supposed to be going to the schools that are creating that funding source, so, even though it goes into what's the average per student, that money's really supposed to go to your Title I school, you don't have the ability locally, the Board of Ed's can't say, oh, we're just gonna disperse that amongst all the schools. It's earmarked for certain things, it's what they, for lack of a better term, they call it a restricted fund, it's gotta go to those schools, and it's got to help serve those schools. So it's really that number that, what it is per pupil spending, is a skewed number when you look at where the funding sources are coming from. If you broke the funding sources down, and looked at them, and looked at what the counties are putting in, Queen Anne's County puts in the sixth most money in the state of Maryland for accounting, even though, wait a minute, aren't we twenty-fourth out of twenty-fourth in per pupil? How does that even figure, right? Because money's coming from somewhere else, it's very simple, it's, it's, this is not rocket science, it's just a matter of, it's not a shell game, it's just the real numbers, it's what they are, it's what we deal with up here, we know this, it's been like this since the first day I was sworn in as a commissioner, Queen Anne's County has never gotten the money from the state that, uh, we really probably should get, because they say we're so wealthy, we don't need state money, but my argument back to that is, every single citizen in this county pays state taxes. Why should we give money to the state to give to other jurisdictions in our name when we could use it back here? And that's the kind of things we need to fight for and talk to our legislators, and not the legislators from Queen Anne's County, they get it, we need to talk to other legislators around the state that it can affect the change to make this happen. And the governor gave some promising remarks at the Mako Conference this year, that yes, it's time to do something about it, and hopefully, it will be to put the brakes on and figure out how best to allow the counties to structure within these guidelines, and within the, the Kerwin pillars, how to make it work financially, 'cause if we don't, this is a train wreck just looking, i- it's not a if, it's when counties are gonna start to run off the rails on this. And everybody can say, well, you can raise taxes, sure you can, but everybody knows that you can't tax your way to prosperity, and just taxing this is you're gonna do what we did ten years ago, when we had people exiting the state at a, at a, just an alarming rate. And so we've gotta figure out how to make this work, but make it work financially for the county, for the teachers, and obviously for us commissioners, 'cause gray hair's come when you get through most of this stuff, especially in the budgetary side, this is our biggest budget issue, and look, and some just get rid of it altogether, so you don't even have to, so they have gray hair. But, uh, so, i- if anybody has any questions, don't go on Facebook and ask them, I have a phone number, I have an email, email me, call me, I don't care, I'd rather have the information out there. If I'm wrong about something, please send it to me, I'm open to it, because like I said, if you saw the papers I have sitting on my desk now to kinda culminate all this is and all it's been for the last, you know, eight years, a lot of people think this just started a year ago, but Kerwin's been around for eight years, from the policy to the financing, and now the implementation phase, so. We're doing what we can with it, we've ordered the audit for the Board of Ed, and it's not, again, like, uh, Commissioner Moran said at the last meeting, it's not to incriminate anybody, it's to find out how are we gonna make this work, how are we gonna take these real numbers that are sitting up here on this screen, how are we gonna make them fit into what we have to accomplish, so.
How did we go from one million to the next year, an ask of eleven million? You know, what changed in the system to cause all that? And that's, and that's what I'd like to know, like to just see how we, if we can help fix that, and, and get us on a better balance there, so we'll see.
So just real quick, Captain, the, the, the total dollar amount that, that, um, is needed for education in, in, for our students here in Queen Anne's County for the year, for the Board of Ed? How much? Hundred and seventeen, hundred and eighteen?
Uh, I believe their budget stroke this year's in one, just short of one-nineteen, somewhere in that area.
Hundred and nineteen million.
And that includes federal and state dollars yet.
And, and Queen Anne's County funded seventy-four million of that?
We funded seventy-five million via the, the normal, uh, maintenance of effort and over-maintenance of effort process, but what, again, is never reflected in here, and we talked about a lot of times, is we also pay for all the SROs in the schools, we take of times, is we also pay for all the SROs in the schools, we take care of all the parking wreck, we pay the debt service on the capital budget. So, when you get into what's actually coming out of our cash pocket operating side, it's, it's $80 to $82 million total for education by itself, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Jack, I think that was excellent information people need. The, I have the number for 2025 student population, 7,152.
Also, that's way less than even when I was figuring that, huh?
Yep, it's even less. And so, and so people can also understand the difference of the state funding. So, in, in 2023, the state gave us, what, $6,854 per pupil, 2024, $6,926 per pupil. So, they, they increased this by $72, $72 a pupil. So, like, the rate of increase that they gave us for a student is less than the rate of increase for the jar of mayonnaise over the same period of time, right? Like, mayonnaise is gone from $4 to $8, doubled in price, and we're getting like a 1% increase. Baltimore City, state contribution to them, $17,114. Somerset County, $17,804. 250% more money to those counties each than to us from the state money. So, people want to say, well, where's the money? Where's the funding? Why has the county cut things? The numbers don't lie, that it's, the funding, any shortfalls that are coming up is not coming from the county end. We have significantly kept up with and gotten ahead of where we were supposed to be. We're not getting the money from the state, and some of these numbers are shocking. People should be outraged how much of their money is going to other jurisdictions. And I will point out that some of these, some of these jurisdictions that are getting a lot of this money, some of the poorest performing academically in the state, right? So, more money doesn't mean better teachers, better schools, better students. That, and I think, Jack, when you're on the Kerwin Committee, you pointed out to them, maybe you should study what we do in Queen Anne's County, because we're able to make this work and be physically conservative. And that was, you know, heresy, how dare you, how dare you say that we can make this work economically? But maybe if they looked at that, we could have actually had some real improvements in education.
That was, that's, that was ultimately the, the reason why I asked the question, what is the total educational budget annually, and how much do we give? And, and, you know, simple math tells you the difference is what the state is committing and...
And it's, these aren't, but, you know, again, I go back to, if this isn't an outrageous number we're asking for from the state, this, when they put this out, this was the number they said, right? And they haven't met that number, and it's a very conservative number. There's no inflationary index in that 1.3 that they've already cut us, right? Because that was what they predicted back in 2019, right? So, that number, just say if it followed the percentage increase we're seeing, that number should, they've really shorted us probably $4 to $5 million, because it should have, you know, it should have at least linear, to some extent, followed what we've gone up over that time.
And it hasn't.
And it hasn't. I mean, we're going to be 25% roughly, I think, figure about 25% to 30% higher when it's all said and done, at a cost. And, again, it's, this is not an indictment of the teachers, of our Board of Ed, of our super tenants, or, or anybody. It's, this is a problem we're all going to have to, you know, face together. This, this is real, it's pitting, and I think to some extent, politics likes to do this, we're seeing it on the national stage. If you pit people against each other, you divide people. If you divide people, like the saying goes, divide and conquer. So, I just think it's important that we all take what we know here and just utilize it, and come into the united front and say, listen, we're not asking for the world, just give us what you promised us five years ago. And we'll, we'll continue to try to make it work, but you, you got to meet us where you at least told us you were going to be, at a minimum, so.
And to your point, we really want to encourage people to reach out to the state officials, the Department of Education, telling them about the issues that we're having, and to rethink the blueprint, and to reexamine the numbers that they're putting out there for us. And to your point, first off, thank you for doing this, that's a great job that you did, and very clear, and we're going to be putting it up on the website, and folks will be able to see that. But, starting in next year, we start going in the red, and then by $5 million, and then FY '30, to your point, the $20 million isn't cumulative, that's one year. And then, then '31, it's going to be $25 million.
Right, yeah. Yeah, you, and, yeah, because you're spending it over every, that's, it's, yeah, you're, that last year, you're $20 million more than you projected, but the year before, you were $16 million more than what you projected, so that's really $36 million more than what you projected. So, it's cumulative over the time, like you said, Patrick, that's a great point, Patrick. When you go in the red there, from the time you're in the red through...
It just snowballs.
Right, you're, and I guess that's what that number is there, Jeff, is that the $93 million basically spent? Yeah, right, yeah.
And, and that's operational money, right?
Correct.
I think people also raise questions about on the capital side, right?
Yeah, please bring that up, yep.
So, like, something, I, I hear, there's a red herring, like, oh, you have money from your Board of Ed building, right? But you don't have money for the kids. And it's important to know a couple of things. This Board of Ed building, this has been in process for years. The building is over 100 years old, the, the mechanical equipment, plumbing, electric, all that, probably 60 years old. You have, it is not a building that people should be working in, right? Long-term, it's, it's not good. The people who work for the Board of Ed, they're your neighbors, they're people you went to school with, they're citizens of Queen Anne's County, they also should have good working conditions. So, the current Board of Ed, 47,338 square feet. The new Board of Ed, 33,977. The building is a smaller square footage, we're not building some new tower, like people like to say, it's a smaller building. And, and this makes sense, right? Because the current Board of Ed was a school. You have wider hallways that you don't need in an office building. You have classrooms that are being used as offices, but you wouldn't make an office as big as a classroom. It's old, it's antiquated, the, the, the heating, the cooling, and the power of that building is very expensive.
All the mechanicals are...
The new building will be a lot cheaper, right?
And the, the old building, when the study was done, to bring the oldest building up to today's standards would cost more than the building, brand-new building. And even if they did it, it would still not comply with ADA requirements.
Right. And you have to move the Board of Ed out while you're doing the renovations, then you move them back in, and you still have a building that's 14,000 square feet bigger than what you need.
Right.
That doesn't make sense. Then people say, well, why are they doing the Board of Ed? We need this school or that school to be replaced. The upgrades of schools and new schools are all part of a capital plan that we're addressing. But I think what people also don't understand is, to build a new school, you get matching money from the state. Each county gets a different percentage. But in order to get that, you have to meet certain amounts of student population before the state will kick in. You would, it would be really irresponsible to build a new school, because everybody wanted a new school in the county to foot the whole bill on that.
Right.
You need that state, state matching. What, what's the percent?
110.
110%.
110%. Oh, we get 50-50, but it's 110%, you got to be of...
To trigger it, right.
To trigger it through the state.
So, 50-50, that's, I mean, if you're talking about, how, how much is a high school probably now, 110 million or something like that?
Severn Park Heights, it's $450 million.
Yeah, so you wouldn't, the county would not do that on their own, you have to wait, and again, these are the state requirements that we have to comply with. So, we're looking at those things, and, and we are, there's a lot of money that goes into upgrading these schools, into making them better and expanding them. But unfortunately, sometimes you have to use a trailer, because you don't have the student population to justify a new building according to the state's standards.
That's right.
These are the things that we have to live by. So, we do, there is a lot of thought that goes into all of these things and how you budget it, but there are handcuffs on you as to what you can and can't do, not just on the operational side, but on the capital side. And again, like Jack said, reach out to us, we're happy to explain these things, but there is a method to our madness of, of how we're going about doing these things. And so, it's important, though, I think, to, those are some of the, the things that, that we hear to point out and address.
As, as I was getting, running, the numbers that I was told was 30 to 25, 25 to 30 million for the, for the new school.
No, 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 for the Board of Ed.
Yeah.
So, my point is, we've held the line.
Oh, it's much less.
Yeah, 30 million versus 15 million, we'll take the 15 million.
And, and another thing I heard at the Board of Ed meeting, which I didn't, I hadn't heard unless you guys had, maybe, and I was going to bring it up to see if you guys had heard anything different. As far as what's going in the old Board of Ed building, I have never heard that be decided. I know they were saying they're going to put kids in there and all that, and that's never, and, and I agree with the one comment that was made, it's, you won't put your Board of Ed members in there, but you're going to put kids in there. And I agree, no, we're not putting kids in there, let's just quell that. Yeah, I mean, there's, yeah, that's not happening, so.
We want to know why there's so many studies, because we have to, the state requires you to do studies before.
They do, and, and that's a great point, Chris. Again, another state mandate is, to do anything, you got to study it.
Yes, it's not that we want to spend money on studies.
No, we do not. We know what we want to do, but, again, it's, there's many hoops you got to get through, crawl through to get some stuff done, so. Now, I'm done, Jim.
Boom. Anybody else? I did remember.
What is it?
I'm going to end on a good note. Tomorrow night, myself, Sheriff Hoffman, Lance Richardson, and Steve Chanley are going to be judges at the Symphony Village Chili Cook-Off, so.
Okay.
Taking tums before and after.
Who, who are the judges?
Myself.
You?
The sheriff.
I, I thought the sheriff said he doesn't judge anything.
Well, he might...
He said he learned his lesson on a baby contest.
Yeah, that's...
There was five mothers that weren't happy with his decision.
He's on it now, so, that's, we'll meet him tomorrow night. And that's after, and the other thing was, tomorrow, we're, we're being visited by the Secretary of, and also the opioid czar. They're coming out, Drug Free Coalition, and going to take them to some locations, going to the Chamber. Second to last, if it rains, we're going to end at the Chamber, but if it doesn't rain, we're going up to Love Point Park, showing them those purple trails, and what the county's been doing, and what the county can use help with when it comes to that. So, in case in point, our suicide, you know, that'd be good to get them tied in with Board of Education now, so, good.
Yeah, perfect.
Anything else for the good of the group?
I make a motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.